Thank you Chair Bone, we'll start with you.
I am here.
Oops, sorry, thank you, Michelle, I mean Supervisor Bushnell, sorry.
Good morning.
Off my game today. Supervisor Wilson?
Present.
And Supervisor Arroyo and Supervisor Medron are absent this meeting.
All right, salute to our flag.
Blood allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to recognize this National Law Enforcement Day, so thank goodness they're there for us. Madam CEO, any adjustments to the consent calendar?
Good morning Chair Bone, there are no adjustments, but I would just like to clarify that item H1 is a board-sponsored item that is being presented by Public Health.
With that, I'll take public comment on the consent agenda. Seeing none on the consent agenda, I'll bring it back to the board. I'll move consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We do have a couple resolutions and a proclamation. Proclaim January 2024 as National Mentoring Month. We're not supposed to clap. I guess that went out the window, so. Outta here, no. Come on up kids. And I like it when you guys all come in together, this is kinda cool.
Thanks for having us.
It's a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors County of Humboldt. Whereas this year, Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast, CASA of Humboldt, and Boys and Girls Clubs of the Redwoods celebrate 139 combined years of service provided to the youth of Humboldt County. Together, it is recognized that the future of Humboldt County rests on the success of its youth. Whereas a mentor is caring, consistent presence who devotes time to help a young person develop personal strength and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship. Quality mentoring encourages positive choices, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. Whereas research shows that young people matched with a caring adult through a quality mentoring program are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 81% more likely to report participating regularly in extracurricular activities and sports, 78% more likely to volunteer, and twice as likely to say they held the leadership position than those who do not have a mentor. Whereas youth development, experts agree that mentoring is crucial to the social, emotional, and congenital development of youth, helping them navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. Whereas our community has several, community volunteers, teachers, advocates, and many others who support, I would say thousands, I wouldn't say several, but anyway, many others who support mentoring movement and work selflessly to improve our children's odds for success. Now therefore, we proclaim that the Board of Supervisors hereby recognize January 2024 as National Mentoring Month, and thanks all our local heroes who participate in quality mentoring programs to equip our youth with the tools to lead healthy and productive lives. The Board also calls on residents to help close the gap between availability of mentors and the number of children facing challenging circumstances who would love to spend time with the Big Brothers Big Sister, CASA Advocate, or Boys and Girls Clubs of the Redwoods Mentor. It takes a little to be big for National Mentoring Month, signed Rex Bond, Chair.
Good morning Board, thank you so much for recognizing this today, it means so much to us. My name is Stephanie McMullen, I am the Board President for Big Brothers Big Sisters. I'm also a social worker, a therapist, and my very most important title, I am a mom. I got involved with Big Brothers Big Sisters because as a therapist, especially a child trauma therapist, I know firsthand the importance of one single positive adult relationship can make in a child's life. The proclamation read off all the statistics and those are all true. But I think this being the first meeting of the new year, and thinking about how we all set resolutions, what we're really doing is we're setting intention. And when we set intention, we make sure that we set aside our time, our energy, and put that into those goals. And what is beautiful about Big Brothers Big Sisters is we are setting that intention to ensure that the children of this community get the support that they need to truly make a difference in the rest of their lives. And that's why I wanted to be a part of this organization, to really give that opportunity for these children throughout all of Humboldt County. And I think the other thing that's wonderful about this organization is, we don't just do that through mentoring the individual, but we try to do that through the community work that we do, also with the wonderful leadership of our Executive Director Florence Parks. So just to keep that in mind, as this month is Mentoring Month, think of the people in your life that mentored you, and what a difference that made. That may be a teacher, it may be a family member, or it may have just been somebody who took the extra time with you and encouraged you that you could achieve your goals and dreams, and how important that is for a child, just to have that one adult relationship. And so again, we thank your support in this, and every time you look at a child, think about how are you mentoring them in your life. So thank you very much.
Hi, good morning, my name is Heather Marks, and I'm the Program Specialist for Big Brothers Big Sisters. I've been with them since February, but before that, I was a volunteer for eight years. Mentoring is important to me because I had a mentor, I was a homeless teen, and he helped me just kind of get out of the area that I was in, and he really changed the trajectory of my life. And so when I became an adult, I knew that I wanted to give back, and when I found Big Brothers Big Sisters, their message really resonated with me, and so I just really wanted to give back any way that I could. And so yeah, this month, just think about your mentors, and if you have children, think about the people that are also mentoring them, because they do have, they have impact on them, little or small. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ally Brown, and I am the Enrollment and Match Support Specialist for Big Brothers Big Sisters. Excuse my comfort notes on my phone. So, but before I worked with Big Brothers Big Sisters, I was actually a Big Sister myself, from the years of 2010 to 2014, and I wanted to give you a little glimpse into a Big Sister's take on what mentoring can do. So, so from 2000, or in 2010, I had a close friend who was on the Board of the Fort Bragg Big Brothers Big Sisters, and they knew I was a school employee, but they thought, I think that you should be more of a one-on-one as well. So, but I had some questions, I had, that I think all Bigs have, do I have the time? That's the biggest one, do I have the time? Can I think of fun activities every week? And most importantly, is what I have to give enough? And so even though I had these doubts, with enough intentional thought, I was able to push through that discomfort and decided to sign up to be a Big. So after we were matched, my little's name is Sorry, after we were matched, we started to create that foundation of a long-lasting and impactful relationship. We would attend Big Brothers Big Sisters events, like Valentine Cookie Decorating, or the Big Chili Cook-Off, and then we'd also do community events, like the Nutcracker, which became an annual tradition that we did for four years when we were together. But it was also a million little moments, like going for hot chocolate, or collecting seaglass at Glass Beach, or braiding each other's hair. So, I want to express that the bond between the Big and the Little is mutually exquisite. So she gave as much to me as I did to her, and I'm not alone in that. 85% of alumni Bigs and Littles say that Big Brothers Big Sisters changed their life for the better. 62% of alumni Bigs say their time with their Little was impactful and made a difference in their life. So, I just want to end with saying, mentorship sounds huge, but in truth, it takes little to be big. Thank you.
Hi there, good morning, I'm Bonnie Fiero, Community Member. I've been here a couple of times around this time of year, because these services through these agencies are absolutely essential for our community. So, I am actually here to talk to you about investment and result. Think for a moment of where you all are in your lives as adults, and how you have gotten here, to this day, to this specific moment. There were some good choices and probably some bad choices, if you knew me, during my teenage years. And probably, oh, and as children or teenagers, think of that one adult or older human who listened to you, taught you things, laughed with you, spent time with you, and unknowingly, perhaps without effort, guided you. That is mentorship. Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast is an awesome agency. It has an active Board that makes sound decisions, it provides good jobs that build people up with skills that are marketable, and it has Florence Parks, who has become our community partnership and strength champion. This organization has youth waiting for you, your esteemed Board, and the community in general, who are listening in, to come forward. This organization has needs for funds to continue providing program services, mentoring services to our community's youth, a human touch that is so needed, I repeat, so needed in this technologically heavy world of ours. This organization has what I call Better Yourself opportunities in their office as volunteers, as a Big, as a Big, as a Big, that time commitment for your community and giving back and contribution, or a position on the Board. You want to make social change, you want to become involved, these are all things that we think about, tap into your courage and become a Big. Get out of your computers and off your phone, and get into your community, and this is the way to do it, this is the easy way to do it. Contact these offices and become involved. I dare you and I challenge you. I started this chat talking about investment and result. I'm talking to you about making an investment in you and your community, and netting the result of enjoyment, contribution, laughter, and love. Why would you choose to miss out on that? Harriet Tubman stated, "Every great dream begins with a dreamer. Always remember, you have within you the strength, the patience, and the passion to reach for the stars, to change the world." From my own Scottish heritage, William Barclay stated, "There are two great days in a person's life, the day that we are born, and the day that we discover why." And I'll leave you with a Latin proverb, and then move on to Mrs. Parks. That Latin proverb that really spoke to me this morning while I was doing research during this presentation, "If there is no wind, row." Thank you for your time.
Wow, thank you for just setting aside the time to hear about something that's so essential in our community when there's so much going on. Sometimes, from setting that intention early, to asking someone that you know that can invest the lives of our children, to investing your own individual resources, and the most important resource of all our time, into our children, through visibility and through mentorship this month, be intentional. I ask you to think about our kids in a new way this month, while we're setting our intentions, make sure that you do some spontaneous mentoring. We don't have to commit for the year through Big Brothers Big Sisters, or have a CASA mentee, or join a Boys and Girls Club and mentor there to make an impact. We can give our kids visibility through spontaneous mentoring, but we have these wonderful opportunities for civic engagement, to invest in our youth and our future in a whole entirely new way, and it's been done for centuries. So the way that we can do it now this year, that's different from years before, is through our Lunch Buddies program. And Lunch Buddies is a 30-minute opportunity. You can spend your lunch with a young person and change the environment of our schools. This is essential. If we allow things just to continue as they are, then we will get the results of that. But we have to stand up individually and make change. So I'm asking for 30 minutes of your time as professionals, to have a lunch with a young person, or a young staffer in your community. We have Lunch Buddies at Lafayette Elementary here in Eureka, so it's just a five-minute drive away, and for 30 minutes, you can set intention and tone in that lunchroom cafeteria, and be in contact with kids and hear what their actual needs are, and see with your own eyes what that community needs. So there are so many ways to give back, and I know our time is essential, and there's so many things that are going on in this world, but to take the moment now, to consider all that we can do by just having some fun with our young people, by just taking a moment, there's nothing more important than that. It really does take little to be big, but it also takes each of us to have that collective community that we all deserve. So thank you for your time today, and thank you for all that you'll do this month to invest in mentoring.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, and thank you for all you guys do for Big Brothers and Sisters. To define a mentor is someone who guides another into greater success, and I want to recognize also that it's just not children. I've been mentored many times throughout my adult life, and it very much has helped me become the person and grow into the person that I want to be. So I just really want to recognize that, that you're never too old, and it's never too late to learn, and to learn to accomplish whatever you want through a mentor. So thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
I want to thank Big Brothers Big Sisters for coming in today, to remind us again of the wonderful programs, but I want to, just a shout out, I have several very good friends of mine who have been and currently are Big Brothers and Big Sisters both, they just speak glowingly of the program and the experiences that they have, and I have to say, they're your best advertisements for sure, they're the people that are engaged. If anyone knows, I'm going to say that most people know of somebody in their community that is engaged, you know, doing this work, or that's work really, it's spending this time, investing in the community in that way. Talk to them about it, because it's really inspiring. I'll take a look at this Lunch Buddies, thinks it's a good idea.
Great, thank you guys very much, I get so many Big Brothers Big Sisters out at Redwood Fields, you know, bringing the kids out, getting them involved, so that's, I see a lot of that, and I see the wealth of good it's doing, so thank you guys. All right. This is items that are on the consent agenda?
Yes, are items five and six on the consent agenda, that's what I'm rising to address.
Please.
Thank you very much, my name is James Chaffey, I want to welcome the new Chair of the Board. I hope you will not continue the practice of your predecessor, of impugning the relevance or the civility of the speakers before they even open their mouth. It was intended to denigrate public comment, and you should be welcoming public comment. You may remember that I addressed you on November, December 4th, and at that time, you had two lists before you. A list of local appointments to be publicly posted, and a list of appointments for your own members. I pointed out that the Humboldt Law Library Board of Trustees was not on either list. Well, who is neither a member of your Board and not a member of your Board? Well, the answer is the conspirators, that's who, also known as the insiders. Now you have another list before you, item five, of quote, "Current and projected vacancies that you approve." The vacancies on the Law Library Board of Trustees is not on that list either. The reason is obvious from the item. Its protocol states that you accept applications for all Boards, Committees, and Commissions. With respect to the Board Trustees of the Law Library, you don't want to do that. I have written to you about the malfeasance of this Board of Trustees, including physical malfeasance, yet you expect to rubber stamp all of that malfeasance on the consent agenda. The Humboldt Law Library Board of Trustees and your appointment to it in item six is controlled by state statute. It's California Business and Professions Code 6300 through 6363. I would encourage you to read it. The documents before you almost are in almost entirely misinformation. I don't have time to address every instance, but the most important point is that the Chair of this Board of Supervisors is himself one of the trustees. The intention of that provision is to include some responsibility by incorporating official who is elected and accountable to the public. Your neglect of that provision is perforce and abdigation of that responsibility. The Chair of this Board of Supervisors wants to be able to say that he has no clue about the Law Library, and has no idea of what I'm talking about. Well, California state statute is designed to prevent Rex Bond from being able to say that. It makes obvious, what you don't want to make obvious, is that you are observing the first rule of courthouse politics, which is, don't interfere with somebody else's ripoff, and they won't interfere with yours. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe I was on the Law Library five years ago when I was Chair, so thank you. I would, okay, go ahead.
I guess this would be a point of order, I think you took public comment before the other things, so at your discretion as a Chair, when you take public comment.
Thank you.
In the past, it had been done, where you had the people, like the mentoring, read their thing and do their thing, and then we could comment to support them, which I came partly to do today. I strongly support mentoring. For those of you who know, sometimes I mentor politicians in some ways. I also like to mentor very young politicians. Blue Lake is now an area where we have a lot of younger people, a lot of people getting politically interested in the 3rd District, and it's great to be able to mentor people through our whole life, and I'm sure everybody's mentored somebody. I strongly suggest you, as Board Members, always be in the process of mentoring somebody to fill your shoes when you're no longer going to serve, and I think that's an important thing as far as the mentoring goes. I did wish to make comment on the quarterly report, number five, of vacancies. On there, one of those you have on there is coming forward the end of January, and this is a vacancy that will be on your Planning Commission meeting, and allegedly, there's been some stupid court ruling that does not enable you to advertise that now, and so there's no void in this, and I strongly suggest that you, somebody referred to as a stupid court determination, but there should be no reason why we don't have a process where you could at this time be taking applications, so as of the first meeting thereafter, the 31st of January, where you would be able to appoint that Board Member. I see the void there. It's been told me most likely there won't be a quorum problem. Last meeting, there were only three Planning Commissioners up there, and if you're minus one of those people, then you would have not been able to have a meeting. So strongly support you looking into that, so that we can keep those positions filled on a regular basis without having those voids. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on consent today.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, I'm Frederick Breckenridge, and I got here late, so I'm not exactly sure where we're at in this, but mentorship and the-
We're on the consent calendar.
Okay, mentorship and the legal library are two of the hottest topics in my research right now, and when somebody looks up to you, it's not something to take lightly. When they invest their years of watching you, listening to you, looking up to you, some things, the best things we can learn from a mentor is what not to do. And I'm going to do my best not to lament the words of the gentleman before me, but that slope is as steep as the Trinity's. I don't think I'm going to be able to do it. You know, I can't research enough to see where my mentors cross the lines, and I think, I think let's focus on the legal library. We couldn't need it more. Judge Kilron, despite looking down and saying, "You're in the lobby of a doctor's appointment, I lost my job to be at," only said, "I can tell you haven't been to the Self Help Center." Well, it was closed through COVID, so was the legal library, with the ring doorbell on it. Our Self Help Center said, "One call in, one call back." My co-parent files so much, you don't get a call back. If we could mingle the two, the Self Help Center and the legal library, to, to bring them together and offer hours from 9:00 to 11:00, I'd like to be up there getting self-help right now, but I have to be in a County Board of Supervisors meeting, that means another trip back here. A working man cannot participate, and unfortunately, he's the one that receives the paperwork the most, and needs a Self Help Center for domestic violence issues, stalking, harassment, things that brought me today to appreciate my mentor, my mentor, for helping me appreciate the value of piecing together free clothing, because you lost everything you had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dina Kellerman, and I'm hoping this is the right time to do it. I really want to talk about the nitrous oxide.
No.
Not time, let me know when it's time.
But it's coming.
Okay, good.
Okay, we're going to go back to presentations, I'm sorry, I had somebody at the podium, so I kind of circumvented that, so.
Chair Bone?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, did you want to just complete the public comment?
Yeah, go ahead, there was a hand up that came in late, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, so caller 3739, you've been unmuted. You'll have three minutes. There you go.
Hi there, take me a second, I'm mute. This is Nancy Olson, I'm the CEO of the Greater Eureka Chamber of Commerce, and I feel like I've got a fourfer today, looking at the first four items on your consent calendar. First of all, I'd like to express my personal support for mentoring. I'm a longtime supporter of Big Brothers Big Sisters, and also commend the work of CASA and the Boys and Girls Club. I have watched the fantastic work that all three of these organizations do to support our community's youth, and I want to echo the woman who put out a challenge to folks to step up and become mentors and get involved in these important organizations. I'd like to put that out to the business community. We may feel busy, but there are always ways that we can invest some of our time in our region's most precious commodity, and that is our youth, who are our future. So I want to really support mentoring and the proclamation for mentoring. I also want to express support for the National Blood Donor Month, and it's such a vital resource in our community, the important work that this group does every day. If you can, give blood, and it saves lives, as we all know. And then I also want to give a congratulations to Anna Jordan and Michael Logan, who are with the County Library. Send my congratulations to them on their retirement. So thank you for letting me put in this word of comment virtually.
Thank you caller. Okay, with that, I will turn to Supervisor Bushnell on the National Blood Donor Month.
Thank you. So this month is National Blood Donor Month, and they are doing a tour-
So this month is National Blood Donor Month, and they are doing a tour at the facility. You can look that up online when they're going to do that. I believe it's next week, but I wanted to say, imagine that you're in a car accident and you have an injury that maybe nicks an artery, and you're bleeding, and you go to the hospital, and the only thing you need to save your life is blood, and that there is no blood there to save your life, and that was your only injury. National Blood Donors Month is so important, but actually, the intent to give blood and to do that is just more important. So if you have an opportunity, it's one thing you can do if you want to give back. It doesn't take very long, and they have their blood donor van all over Humboldt County, so think about doing that. So with that, whereas a safe, reliable blood supply that is collected and stored locally means patients in our communities can access quality health care locally and receive a transfusion without delay. And whereas a blood donor, blood donors are the local heroes that help our neighbors, friends, and families, and their donation is the difference between life and death in many instances. And whereas the act of giving blood personifies our community's spirit to act with compassion and become a hero for a stronger or a stranger in need. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim January National Blood Donors Month throughout Humboldt County, and the Northern California Community Blood Bank would like to urge all elected and appointed officials and all community members to donate blood to help their fellow community members, if eligible. This really could save a life, in fact, many lives. Signed, Rex Bone, Chair.
Thank you. And I want to recognize Sheriff Hansel, and they do a challenge the badge drive every year and get close to 100 units or so from throughout the county. I'm on the wall down there. I've delivered. My mom actually worked there for about 18 years at the Blood Bank with Betty Ryan and Tom Schaller, two former executive directors. And to tell you how life has changed, my mom's job, well, she worked in the lab, but she worked at night when people called for blood, and her payroll stub said, "Call girl." That's what she got. She got $25 a night to be a call girl, and that's what it said. And I'll tell you what, at 75 years old, she was pretty proud of that, so. But anyway, the Northern California Community Blood Bank has been in great hands and done a great job for all of us. I mean, and you're exactly right. In a time of need, it's kind of amazing. I get called in. I haven't been for quite a while, but you used to get called in late at night when they ran low, and you'd get there at midnight, and there'd be a variety of people in there, so. Anyway, thank you for that. And then there also are two retirements coming from the library, a total of 73 years, 36 for Michael Logan, and 37 for Anna Jordan. So we want to recognize them for all their commitment to the library. With that, Nikki, do you have a roll call vote?
I do. Thank you, Chair Bone. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 3-0.
Great. Thank you very much. We will move on to-- Turn all my pages. There are no matter set, and we're going to public hearings.
We have public comment--
Oh, public comment on non-agenda items. I was just looking at that when I said that. Public comment, non-agenda items.
Chair, if I could have an opportunity?
Please.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to recognize that today is National Law Enforcement Day, and it was, came from an incident in Missouri in 2014, and just to recognize what the law enforcement does for our community and for our nation, and the men and women that have lost their lives serving us and protecting us. So I just really want to recognize that, say thank you to Sheriff Hansel and all his gals and guys, and, you know, whether you want to say you like it or you don't like it, when you're scared and you need help, you call 911. It doesn't matter who you are, and they respond. And so I just really, really appreciate the commitment that law enforcement, whether it's our Sheriff's Department, Highway Patrol, you know, Fortuna PD, Riedel PD, what they do and what they bring to Humboldt County.
Yes, thank you very much, James Chafee, and I wanted to thank the Chair for ratifying my point. I assume if he was on the Board five years ago, it was more honest in those days. A law library is fundamentally and essentially a library, and as such, it provides access to our cultural and historical heritage. This reminds me of a book called The Oxbow Incident. It was a classic novel by Arthur Van Tilburg Clark. It was made into a classic movie by William Wellman with Henry Fonda, Dana Andrews, Jane Darwell, Henry Morgan, and Henry Davenport, and a very young Anthony Quinn. Those names might not mean anything to you now, but they were big deals in the day. This was a picture that was nominated for Best Picture Academy Award. It lost out to Casablanca with Humphrey Bogart and Ingrid Bergman. It's a story of a posse. Goes out to find some cattle wrestlers, finds a few men who protest their innocence, and they hang them anyway. One of the men about to be hanged asks if he can write a letter to his wife. When they find out that those men were indeed innocent, they read his letter to his wife, and he explains why it's bad to take the law into your own hands. And he said, "It is not breaking the law, one law, but all laws." Laws are a lot more than words you put on a book, or judges, or lawyers, or sheriffs you hire to carry it out. It's everything people have ever found out about justice and what's right and wrong. It's the very conscience of humanity. There can't be any such thing as civilization unless people have a conscience, because if people touch God anywhere, where is it except through their conscience? And what is anybody's conscience except a little piece of conscience of all men that ever lived? I guess that's all I've got to say, except kiss the babies for me, and God bless you. Your husband, Donald. Now, if I can do that, you can imagine in the hands of Henry Fonda. But of course, the law is words in a book, and the Supreme Court of the United States has decided that access to those books is part of the constitutional right to due process, even for inmates in prison. We have a law on the books now that says, and I quote, "A law library established under this chapter shall be free to all residents of the county for the examination of books and other publications at the library or its branches." Aren't you breaking not one law, but all laws when you break that law? Isn't it a heavy thing to be told that you don't have due process just because you're a resident of Humboldt? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you. So again, the procedure is going to be, you'll take Zoom after the people in the room then? Is that the normal? No, just curious. Anyway, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the mentoring thing, take this a little further. I don't come out and endorse candidates, but I do rate candidates who are running for office. And I think I have some criteria I rate them on. Some of them will find that I will call them multiple times on their, let's say, their phone that's listed on their, when they're running, they have a thing, "Call me here." Well, if I call that person four or five times and they don't call me back, then I assume maybe they're not interested in it. Another thing I rate people on, are they, do they show up in the room? Are they willing to come to the room and actually be part of this? Steve Madrone did that, and he was quite successful with that. The other thing I rate people on is, do you take the time to go around and speak to all the different department heads to see what their needs are? That's a suggestion I make to just about all the people here. And then I kind of start grading the people who are running out there. And so I know that Michelle Bushnell, when I communicate with her, and she does take my calls and returns them, and that's appreciated, unlike her opponent there. But anyway, takes the time to have a meeting with the department heads, like on Monday or something like that, to find out what their needs are and things. That's an asset I find quite desirable. Again, if I recall right, she was one of the ones who did go ahead and approach all the department heads and find out what their needs were, as I encourage, and it does make sense, because then you're educating yourself. You don't have the institutional knowledge up here of what's going on, and you can communicate with people like John Ford and these people and see how things are going to work if you're going to be in the chair. So I don't-- I think those tests are important. I think that's part of listening, part of the job. And so again, I don't endorse people, but I did want to shout out and thank Michelle Bushnell for her method in which she has followed through with those things. I feel she does a good job, and some people deserve second terms, other people don't deserve a first term. And so anyway, that being said, I will be continuing to rate the people on a few different things here and making comments as this election process moves on. That's PoliSci 1000. My understanding is that we have a person, kind of an organizer in Blue Lake, and Mike Wilson has been invited out to a meet and greet out in Blue Lake, and I haven't heard whether he's going to attend or not. But Blue Lake's becoming kind of an interesting place regarding politics, like I mentioned before.
30 seconds.
The people out there are being interested in politics. Some of them are potential future supervisors who are working way through the system, and it's fun to be in a community like that where there is a dedication to that. So we will be seeing how this election plays out. I'm guessing there may be some surprises out there. There may be a three-way race where there's a runoff out there. And so anyway, that's a little bit of my outlook at this time, always evolving thing, but that's my concerns, and that's why I think people rate their supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder here. I'm really bummed out. I dragged my son up here to show him his constitutional rights, and there's only three of you, not five of you. So I wonder if the other two get a pay cut like I do when I go to Planning Commission, I choose to spend time with my family. So that's unfortunate, but I wanted to say, you know, at times I've disagreed with everyone on this Board, and I've also agreed, and I try not to hold a grudge, and I try to move forward and speak from the heart always. That's why I don't have notes, just, you know, trying to do what's best for the county. I want to thank you for postponing the Misere-- the payment plan to come forward in March. You know, me personally, in the last year, I've been burned by licensed distributors more than what I owe in taxes. There's no repercussions, no recourse. It is what it is. I'm hopeful that I can pay the first half of my payment before March, so then I can get on a payment plan, because I'm still owing money back for being classified as mixed light versus outdoor, even though I applied for the refund. I was told you have to pay the first half, and my refund got denied. So it's government. Doesn't make sense, but, you know, that is what it is. So thank you for that. The other thing that I really want to promote is, you know, our ability to be out and be in wilderness. I love taking my son in nature. He loves to hunt. He loves to fish. Those are all constitutional rights, I believe, so continue protecting those, preserving those rights, the ability to explore nature, the ability to have private property, and all those kind of things. And lastly, I see the three of your names up. I just saw a thing on social media where the three of you up here are endorsing a no-on-Misere campaign. I would say that's the greatest threat to Humboldt County that we have in front of us in the next couple of months. You want to see the final nail in the coffin for our economy, worry about housing, all that other kind of stuff? That thing goes through, phew. So thank the three of, I thank the three of you for putting your names on that. That takes a lot. Some people might not be fans of you putting your names there, but I'm a fan of that, so thank you. And lastly, I want to say, you know, we have laws on the books, and it's really hard for me to tell my son to, "Hey, pay your taxes, do what the government says, do everything right." And he drives by and he's like, "Hey, there's prime real estate. What about these people, the trash, doing the drugs, all those kind of things?" So we got to get some help there, you know? Housing's a problem within the county. Everyone says we need housing, but nobody agrees how we do it. So please help put the funding in place--
30.
--thank you. The funding in place to make sure we can enforce the laws that are on our books, so I don't have to tell my kid, "Hey, follow the rules, but these other people, you don't have to do that." Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Holly Klingel, former logger, former lumberjack, current Wildcat. I'm so glad to have survived to get to 2024. Us old fire horses just don't know when to quit. There's a church group I go to most Wednesday afternoons, and those ladies say, "Holly, why do you do politics? It's such a dirty business." And I said, "That's exactly why I do politics, because if we're not willing to get in there and sling the mud back, then we're not doing what Jesus did." Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Again, I'm Frederick Breckenridge, and, you know, I'd like to stay out of talking politics, you know? Leadership, leadership is a good one to discuss, and I think the path to leadership is the code of conduct, and that's a highlight of my research right now and my pathway into political science at College of the Redwoods for the spring semester. So the non-agenda items that I'd like to speak on would be, are we allowed to request materials for the legal library, like law miscellaneous? Issue 2024, first established in 1814 by Judge Hugh Henry Breckenridge. Updated information on Blackstone Law and his view of it, a really important time for our country. Hale, we haven't heard anything about efforts to help families that were affected by Joseph Hill's abuse, power position, and just a shameful disgrace, like the cardinal sin of all mediators, having reached out to the families he affected, especially the children. Talk about Boys and Girls Club, you know, we can do better. Did we find out where Deputy Tomlin got his drugs he was selling to children yet? Why does the judge overseeing my family law case have more felonies than my daughter's mom?
Thank you. Gordon Clowery, running for 1st District Supervisor. Housing, always in the middle of a crisis here, so we definitely need to address that at some future time. And as far as a library, a law library, I don't know if we can put the people back on who are in charge of that if they are limiting access to who has access to it. That's it. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much. With that--
Chair Bone, we have one caller in Zoom. Caller 2223, you've been prompted to unmute. You will have three minutes. There you go.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good morning. Craig Johnson, and I just want to remind everyone that coming up in March, we have the vote on Measure A, and we need to look for a no vote on that. We could wrap our heads around a lot of what the proponents are saying, what the members of the cannabis community are saying, but I can tell you what it means to me, and it means my job and my right and my ability to sustain my family in a rural environment. Humboldt County is built on these rural communities, and these rural communities need this to keep going forward at some capacity. So I appreciate everyone for listening, and please, for the folks that need to keep their jobs and to keep their businesses, please vote no on Measure A. Thank you.
Thank you, caller Chair Bone. There are no more callers in Zoom.
Thank you, Nick. All right. I'll bring it back to the Board, and we'll open it up to the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. And I think on the first item-- on the first item on the subdivision that has been put off till the 23rd, if you are here to speak on it, you are available to speak on it today. If nothing changes, that will restrict your ability to speak at the next meeting unless something changes. So is there anybody here to speak on the appeal of the 19-lot subdivision, 62-unit multifamily housing unit in McHaleville?
Chair, if I could clarify a point? You can take public comment on the continuance, separate from commenting on the project. separate from commenting on the project.
Okay. And is there any comment on the continuance? Seeing neither, I'll take it back. Mr. Ford, do you want to report on this?
I think you've said it well. This is a request to continue this to January 23rd to allow the full board to be present. And so the request comes with a request from both the applicant and the appellant.
Okay. I appreciate that. Move on to number two of the public hearing. I need to open that. What, oh, do you want to make, do I make a motion to extend until the 23rd?
I'll make a motion that we extend until the 23rd.
I'll second the motion to extend to the 23rd.
We already asked for no comment. So Nikki.
Thank you, Chair Bone. We will start with you.
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson.
Yes, and I just want to double check that there's no comment on the project or the proposed project itself, only because I got an email from someone saying that they were planning on commenting, even though there was a continuance. And so I just wanted to just confirm.
There's no hands up or?
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries three zero.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll open the public hearing on the, and I thought the sheriff was here for this. And he's not, okay. Mr. Ford?
Thank you, Chair Bone. Members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford, representing the Planning and Building Department, requesting that the safe parking and safe shelter ordinance be extended for a period of 24 months. This ordinance was originally adopted as a pilot program to determine how it would work and what regulatory elements may need to be modified or refined. The program would largely allow safe parking, safe shelter facilities as a principally permitted use, subject to compliance with the provisions of the ordinance. The pilot program was approved on, in June of 2022 for a period of 18 months. Unfortunately, nobody has taken advantage of the ordinance to develop one of these facilities. So as part of one of the, as part of the decision to recommend continuing this, staff inquired with organizations who may be interested or would normally be associated with operating one of these to see why we'd not received any interest in this. And the feedback that we received was that the organizations weren't aware that the ordinance and the pilot program was available. So what we want to do is extend it for a period of 24 months, and the Planning and Building Department will really do a public outreach campaign to see if we can generate interest and see if there's grant money available to facilitate opening such facility or facilities. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the chair, Director Ford, we, at the time that we passed this, did a press release. Is that correct?
Yes.
And will we continue to try to inform in that manner and possibly some other ways?
Yeah, we, we will absolutely do a press release. We will reach out, perhaps even go some far as to hold community meetings to talk about things that could be done to facilitate development of these types of facilities.
And to, thank you for that. And to extend the 24 months, and I, you know, for a pilot program, we would need some kind of activity to, you know, compare, to see if it's working. So I encourage the communities, this is an opportunity, if, if the organizations want to try to help the houseless or people that are in their cars, this is a way to do that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And can you, is the process pretty easy? Can you just highlight, you know, how, I know it would be different for different areas, and, but this really, you know, people reached out and said, there's not an opportunity, especially in the rural, you know, like Southern Humboldt area. And then to have nobody come forward is, is difficult when we know that this kind of thing is needed.
Yeah. And so in response to your question through the chair, the process to have one of these permitted simply involves developing an operations plan, three different types of operations plans are kind of specified in the ordinance. But what that would do is just demonstrate how it complies with the provisions of the ordinance. That would be brought into the counter, and a zoning clearance certificate would be issued at the counter. This is basically an over-the-counter review and approval.
Okay. And, you don't bring him forward, do you want to? Supervisor Wilson has some people from Arcata that are going to talk about the Arcata program, and Supervisor Hansel and Undersheriff Bro are here also. Or, I don't know, he might run for something later on. Who knows?
He supervises some stuff.
Yeah.
Well, as part of this, I want to take an opportunity to, there's a couple folks here, and I think, is Director Beck on Zoom today?
Yes, she is.
Okay, great. I wanted to highlight Arcata's safe parking program because it's the only safe parking program in Northern California. And actually, it's pretty rare that there's functional safe parking programs anywhere in California, as much as we talk about it. And I wanted to highlight it because as much as we want to advertise the idea that we have this opportunity through this ordinance, I want folk, people to know that we have an example of an operating one now that's been pretty successful in its endeavors, has some good numbers to, 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 to share. And so I've asked Darlene Spore, the director of Arcata House, to come give us a, just a bit of a, you know, some highlights, and maybe opportunities and challenges, and give a little bit of an explanation of the program as Arcata has set up and Arcata House, the city of Arcata set it up, Arcata House is the contractor. So Darlene, if you could give us a, an explanation of it to let people know what they might be getting themselves into, and, and, you know, from a positive perspective.
I can. Thank you. It's always my pleasure to speak about how amazing our staff are and the amount of people that they really can help. We started in April 2022. We were asked to start a safe parking program, and it was the first of its kind up here. And so we had a big learning curve, and what has resulted is a very successful program, I might say. To date, from April 29th, 2022 to now, we provided 14,625 bed nights. That's one person, one bed night. We've served 128 individuals and 19, 92 households. We currently have 24 people enrolled in that program. Of the people that we've served altogether, 14% have exited to shelter, 9% to temporary housing, 30% to permanent housing, and 54% exited back to, I mean, third, 27% exited back to the street. They just weren't ready. The difference between our program and other programs is ours is a service program. It's not just a parking space. When people come to us, they are ready to work toward getting housed, and we've been very successful. People have a safe place. It's in a gated area. There's community space. We provide socialization activities like art and music and television and games. We do intakes, and there's program rules, and we work to help people on a housing-first approach. If people come in and they behave while they're in there and follow the rules, whatever their history is, whatever, wherever they are right now, we're going to work with them. We have 24-hour staff. Everyone gets an opportunity to work with case management, who helps them apply for entitlements, connections to medical services, connections to jobs and schools for their children, or any other service that they need. We provide housing and job search. On-site, we provide two meals a day, drinks and snacks all day, hygiene stations like porta-potties and hand wash stations. People have access to showers at one of our other facilities and laundry support. We provide access to vehicle registration and insurance assistance. People have an address to receive mail at, which is very important when they're applying for benefits. And they have access to all of the other services that Arcata House Partnership provides. And I think that is probably one of the, greatest benefits of having a program with an organization like us, because we do connect with all of the other services. People take ownership for their own area. We see people planting little gardens in pots and, and keeping their areas clean, and we really appreciate that. I just want to take a minute to talk about a couple of case scenarios, because we're talking about real people here. One of the people I want to highlight is a 71-year-old woman who was homeless for the first time. She had been evicted in the first day of being homeless. She contacted one of our partner agencies, and they contacted us to see if there was anything we could do. We immediately connected with her. She was frightened. She had limited mobility, and this was the first day of her ever being homeless in her life. We were able to get her into the safe parking program. She had a dilapidated SUV. We helped her keep it operational. She moved into the safe parking program. She was in and out of the hospital for several months while she was getting stable. She, obviously, while she was housed, was in poor condition. We eventually got her housed, permanently housed on a rapid rehousing voucher, where she continues to be housed today, and she has started her own little garden there. Another one was a 51-year-old Native American woman who had been a nurse and had a family and a home, and all of that had fallen apart because of domestic violence, where she received substantial physical abuse, caused traumatic brain injury. She then also was recently recovering from cancer treatment, and her outlook on life was very bleak. She trusted no one. She'd been in and out of several programs. She kept leaving and fleeing. She'd been in and out of several programs with us, our street outreach program, a shelter program, the safe parking program. But our outreach staff continued to look for her and find her and provide support. Eventually, she did come back to the safe parking program with her cat, and she remained stable there for six months while she worked to find her own place. Today, she's housed, again with the housing voucher, because that's what we do. She receives case management from Arcata House Partnership and is stable. We have dozens and dozens of these stories. What we are not is we are not a parking lot. It is a program. It's staffed 24 hours a day. When people come to Arcata House Partnership, they have access to all of our services, and we do our very best to move people from being homeless to being permanently housed.
Thanks, Darlene. And I wanted to ask you, well, one, you highlighted an elder that became homeless, and we know now that's the fastest-growing part of the, of our homeless population. But what I was surprised about when I went toward the site was how many people were actually employed, not your employees, but the, the folks that were actually there and going to work every day, still holding down jobs, and, and there are families there with kids going to school, too. And so that's, you know, it's important to understand that people are living their lives in these, in these situations, not just like a, it's not, other things are happening in their, in their space. And so I just wanted to emphasize that. Was there anything else you wanted to emphasize?
I'd want to talk a little, just for a minute about funding, because that's what's important. We have heard that there's opportunities, but if opportunities come without funding, it's not an opportunity for agencies like us to do that. For us, this safe parking program cost us $478,000 a year. That's $45 a night per person. That's less than shelter, what shelters cost us. That's certainly less than what it costs us, I think, to have people on the streets and in and out of emergency rooms. And so although this comes with a cost, I think the cost is that people's lives are saved, that people are not on the streets, that there's a positive impact to businesses who don't have people sleeping in front of their businesses and, and calling the police department to move people along. The impact is great across all of the community.
All right. Great. Thanks. That's, thank, thank you, Darlene, for giving that explanation. I was, there's two other folks I wanted to speak today, which, yeah, oh, sorry. Okay. Do you want to do questions now?
And, and my biggest fear, and I've been saying this, are, are, you brought up funding, and I, that's the, the elephant in the world, the big elephant in the room. Are we, are we worried about with the shape of the, not this year necessarily, but the shape of the state and what they're saying is going to happen the next few years? Is that what we're worried about, is the funding aspect of it? Because we get so much bang for this buck, like what you're providing, what Betty Chin provides. I mean, it's, it's amazing, like you said, and I, and Mike, being around Betty so long and everything else, that how many of them actually go out and find work? It's just, when you're, when you're making $2,500 a month or $3,000 a month, it's hard to take $1,800 out for your family to afford to feed and pay rent and utilities and stuff with everything the way it's going. So this is a, you're creating a great bridge gap there. So are you worried about the funding? Obviously, you're worried about the funding. I mean, do you have answers of how we're going to, I mean, because as, as you say, the homeless are worried about funding, the teachers are worried about their funding, the, the sheriff is worried about his funding, everybody's worried about their funding, and, and, and their funding is the most important thing. And, and right now, we're going to have a tough stretch for a few years.
We are, and we're very worried. I think I'm not expecting to see any reduction in the permanent supportive housing or rapid rehousing vouchers that we come, that we bring into the county. But I'm not sure that we're going to see an increase over the next couple of years. My biggest concern is for support for other programs like, like shelters, our, our regular shelter, Betty Shelter, the mission, like these kind of programs, street outreach, and all of these make a real huge impact on our community, far greater than the person we serve, but on the community as a whole. And I'm very worried that we're not going to see some stable funding coming through for this.
Michelle?
The safe, the, the opportunity that the county is giving is a little different than yours, where it's not a, it wouldn't be a facility that is staffed. And what would you think the success of that could be? And what also, if someone in the community is in need, do they just, how would they, do they just come to you guys? And, and can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. We wouldn't apply to manage a parking program that isn't a program that isn't helping people move from being homeless to being housed. There are other organizations that are interested in that kind of service, and that wouldn't be us. For us at Arcata House Partnership, our goal is always to get people housed. So that's what's important to us. I, I can't speak to what the success is. I think there's a very different population when we're, when we were managing the safe tent lots early on in COVID, a very different population than the people in our safe parking program. Those are, and people we work with through our street outreach program, they're not necessarily people that want to be housed or want to have those kind of services. The reason that our safe parking program is so successful is they are people that want to be housed. They want to go to work. They want their children to go to school, and they're committed to making a difference in their lives. And that's very different.
Great. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thanks for all you do, too. Appreciate it.
Through the chair. So just as an emphasis, I, I would ask Arcata House to come, because an example, not necessarily what, what, I mean, there's kind of a spectrum of options. This is one of them. It's the only one that actually operates or is in existence. So this is what we have. And so I also asked the sheriff or the sheriff's representative through the undersheriff to, to speak to for a moment, if you might, like, how that service has been helpful, and what you think about the potential of the expansion through the county. And again, this is trying to promote the concept here.
Well, if you had asked me this question about five years ago, and I'd say, this is an absolutely terrible idea, right? I've completely changed my mind when it comes to safe parking because of the example that Arcata House has set and other models throughout the, throughout the state and country. This is a program that is actually vital, so we can actually enforce the law. If we have nowhere to send people, then we can't actually enforce laws about people camping on public property or infringing on the rights of others. about people camping on public property or infringing on the rights of others. I would like the undersheriff, Justin Broda, to speak about our involvement with DHHS and how we're approaching this and how we're steering people towards this, towards this program, and how we do support safe parking as long as it's properly managed. This is not an autonomous zone where people get to go there and do whatever they want. We know that there are rules in life, and there are still rules when it comes to, you know, people, you know, that are homeless that need assistance. And a safe parking area is one of those places that still need to have rules, just like Arcata House has set forth. There is successes for people that are willing to put forth the effort to steer them towards housing. And I would like the county to model that as much as we can, as a cost-effective way as we possibly can. I'd like the undersheriff to carry on that conversation.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Board. This is kind of something I could talk about all day, so you might have to, like, pair me into a lane of what you want to talk about. But as the sheriff said, I am a big supporter of this type of program. I think that with the complexities of homelessness and all the contributing factors that we have in our society today, and this isn't a unique issue to us, this is state and nationwide, but we have to look for different options. I hear people say all the time, well, can't these people just get a job or take care of themselves? And the answer is oftentimes, no. Or they might need a hand up, not a handout, or both. You know, everybody's issues and why they're in these situations is different and unique circumstances. I've seen projects like this locally with Arcata, and not locally, but in other areas, are very successful. I'm not saying that there's like a perfect blueprint now, as was mentioned by the sheriff and the other speaker, that there's still a lot of issues and logistics to figure out on how this looks. One of the problems is, the one that we currently have is so centralized, it's almost inaccessible for people in the outline areas of our county, which makes it difficult. And so I think that, just like all the problems that cause people to be in these situations are unique and complex, I think the solution is also not just a one-size-fits-all. I think that we would have to look at something that addresses the remoteness of our county and the different population groups that make up those, you know, the homeless people and the impoverished people now. But, you know, I can tell you that the programs we currently have are a lifesaver for some, and they definitely have a problem solver for us. I mean, they don't fit everybody we deal with and we try to get to services, but they, it is an option, and it helps us with the enforcement part, which, I mean, obviously, we see the human side of it, and enforcement is only a tool to try to get people to comply with the law and to not infringe on other people's free use of property. But as you see, if you look around some of these areas, just the nature of how people are living in these homeless situations is taking away other people's free use of those public areas. And so we want to address the human side of it, but also the legal side of it, where we have all these public areas that are free for people to use safely and comfortably, but also not take away the fact that people have a right to live, and if they don't have a place to go, they're going to have to do that somewhere. You know what I mean? So, again, I'm just, I'm a supporter of this, and I'm willing to assist going forward. I don't claim to have the answers. I have done a lot of research in the field and connecting and through correspondence with other areas that are working on this. And I do think that this is part of the path forward. I, you know, another part of it, which is a whole nother vein to talk about, is mental health, right? I mean, a lot of people that are homeless are there for, you know, economy reasons, mental health reasons, substance abuse reasons, you know, domestic violence reasons. There's a lot of, and a lot of them are combinations of such. But I can tell you that, you know, the conditions and the circumstances, a lot of the people that are in these situations are living in are not humane, they're not safe, and people are victimized. So I think getting people out of green belts and backyards and public areas and into places where we can at least make sure people are safe until they can get their services and try to follow one of these pathways forward to get back on their feet is the best way forward. How we do that financially and logistically isn't something I have the answer to, but I'm willing to be a partner in that going forward.
Thanks for that.
Thanks.
There's not more questions for the sheriff? I was, just wanted to make sure that Connie Beck has a chance to, to talk about the nexus, that the county services are in support of these, of this, if that's all right.
And hopefully, the item says it is about expanding the project for two years. I don't know if we're going to build this. I'm not so sure we don't bring this back. But somewhere in this, when we're talking, you have to understand, we did this two years ago, and we got nowhere. So now we're doing it two years, two years later, and then we've got an hour, we've got a year and a half of, a little over a year and a half of Arcata House and their successes. And now when we're, the money's getting tighter, we, you know, so I think the sheriff wants to get on board and everything else. So what we need to do here is I want, I want to hear all this, but I'm not so sure that we do it right here or we do it in a different format, so we actually get some results for what we're, what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I just wanted to highlight the success that the county's had in terms of this, because oftentimes, you know, as you know, folks are not knowing what the county does with, in relation to these services. This seems like a pretty good opportunity to talk about that, because we're offering this, from a land use perspective, this opportunity. But then there's the part where you can do these things, you can do them with services, and I think there are opportunities to do them actually without services, which is kind of what's talked about, which can be done, but we don't know what that is. But what we do know is what we have in terms of what's been happening with Arcata. That's what we have as an example, and I just wanted to make sure that we had a highlight for that. And I wanted to make sure that folks understood that Arcata is doing that in partnership with not just Arcata House, but also the county sheriff's department and our DHHS as well. That's actually taking a full, you know, the approach is, is multi-agency, and that's, that was the main point. So if there is any more questions with, for Connie, then I want to make sure that...
And I'd like to get Connie on there, because I don't think people realize that none of these programs run by the cities or anything else, they all start with DHHS saying, can you help us with this? That's the way it starts. So we don't, we don't necessarily beat the drum saying we're doing it, but we do, DHHS does, does a lot of work on this. So, you're right. So, do you want to take public comment, or do you want Connie? Connie, do you have anything to say on this?
I do have a couple of things.
Please.
I apologize for not being there in person today. I'm out with a pretty bad cold that's got a scary cough. So I'd just like to say that the Safe Parking program in Arcata actually hasn't been funded through DHHS or the Continuum of Care yet. It was started with City of Arcata and Arcata House Partnership. They are a wonderful referral source for our housing programs, but also other community partner programs. I think Darlene spoke about referrals from other agencies, and so it's not just DHHS, but all other community providers that are working with the homeless population. So that is one thing that I think is important. The other thing, Supervisor Bone, you had, had asked about the funding, and we do, we do think that our, our homeless services funding is going to be reduced. We have our, I think it's round five of the H-HAP funding that will still be available. But there's also something that's relatively new through CalAin that's called Enhanced Care Management, and our nonprofits and our home program will be starting to utilize that funding for these type of services, and that would be ongoing. So there is a little opportunity there for us to do this work with ongoing funding, which we haven't had for services for the homeless population in the past. All of the funding that we've received over the last five or six years is, has been one-time funding, and that really is funding that, that I've been worried about with the budget, the way it is maybe being taken back. So that is one thing. And then also, just through the Continuum of Care, we have shared the ordinance with the other housing advocates and community partners that do this work. So I just wanted to mention that, that we have been sharing that information. And it, you know, there were, there was a lot of excitement when the ordinance was passed, and then, since then, we haven't seen much movement. So I appreciate having an additional two years for folks to be able to do something or try to do something around another Safe Parking program. I'd love to see one in Southern Humboldt if that was a possibility. So thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thanks, Director Beck. And Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you through the chair. Director Beck, when we talk about the Safe Parking and the capabilities of funding, can you, we talk about especially Southern Humboldt, and a lot of the funding is, my understanding is, comes with needing to have program management during this Safe Parking. Is that true? Or what would be the availability for funding for someone that was to do this if they didn't have supervision at these parking areas?
I don't know, without supervision, I don't, I don't know that funding could be approved. I do think that there has to be a pretty solid programming around, around it in order for some of the funding that we have currently through H-HAP. That doesn't mean that someone that has a private property that wanted to do something like this could do it without funding from, from the Continuum of Care, and/or maybe that's something that planning and buildings funding could, could do. I'm, I'm not sure of that.
Thank you. I think the struggles for some of the unincorporated areas are just what you said. While we want to find solutions, and the communities are begging for solutions, it also takes someone stepping up, saying, I'm willing to be that person in charge. And we don't, you know, it's, it's very time-consuming, and it takes a lot from someone. There's groups in Southern Humboldt, especially, you know, Safe, Southern Humboldt Housing Solutions for All that have been working on this for a long time, and we've been, and I help them with DHHS, trying to find solutions down in the, one of the farthest areas removed from the central, from Eureka, which is where their services are provided. And also recognizing, you know, a hand up. Not everybody wants to move or relocate out of their area, which is one of the issues as well. We've had opportunities in my district to house people, but it's not in their own community, and that creates its problems as well. So thank you, Director Beck.
All right. We'll open this up to public comment.
Hello again. I'm Frederick Breckenridge. And, boy, when it comes to momentum and fundraising, I'm a beast. I went Scoobast Steve on this topic, not, not by choice. Clients of one of the proposed directors of the legal library, well, they told me I should be afraid of that attorney, and said, I'll never have another place to live in Humboldt County. It's a small town. And when, unfortunately, when neglect is involved, there's always the chance of intentional. And I think this is where a one-time mentor of mine led our community on the most. So I can think of all kinds of raise money, ways to raise money for this. We could shut down Front Street, Howerson Park, like we did, to sell marijuana, to sell marijuana, because we were watching it move down the range. We could, we could do chili cook-off at, at, say, maybe Fireman's Park in Scotia. We could come up with all kinds of things. We could come up with the resources this county spent harassing me in an RV in Hydesville on River Bar Road while I drove my Lamborghini's down the 36 and 101 during Jalminho. And my mentor never once said, hey, let's get his RV up to Safe Parking.
Kanciwoski, I agree with the assessment that we're not going to get that much help from California. Our budget's upside down, our population's leaving, and the money people here are leaving in droves and going to where there's lower taxation. So, so you got to go to the federal government, basically. They're the only ones I know that can print money. The state can deficit spend. The financing has to come through there, or else you get private people willing to engage in this. For a long time, I've considered doing multiple tiny home villages, possibly, possibly not. The funding has to come, insistence has to come from what the county can make available to people, no matter what level of this kind of project is. It's all about carrots. And right now, it's, it's just about financially not feasible because of the rules and regulations. So if you want these kinds of things to happen, strongly support 24 months. That's kind of a given here. But if you want that, you're going to have to learn to relax the rules and regulations that cost us so much. In other words, such things as tiny home villages, I think possibly, I'm going to talk to John again and see where we're currently at. You don't have to put in all the curb gutter and sidewalk. You don't have to put in all the paved roads. And all these things add up so much that it does not become financially viable to do, do these projects here. So we're kind of a viewpoint where people like myself are deciding whether to continue taking our money out of country, out of state, or a willingness to partner up with some of us who are left here. There are good people out there with good hearts, and they're willing to do these projects. But it does take a team, and that's something that I think we'll be looking to the county for and see what their answers are. And again, that'll be another test to see whether you really want us to stay in the county and invest our money and time here, or take it somewhere where it may be more equitable, easy to do, and more appreciated. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Gordon Claverty, running for First District Supervisor. I also agree. I think this is a great program. It's cost-effective. It's great for the students that have probably just been kicked out of Cal Poly parking lot. They can find a safe space to park. I think we should look at expanding it to Southern Humboldt. There's definitely a lot of needs down there. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Nezzy Wade, and I have a long history with this ordinance and working towards getting the permissions for having safe parking, safe sheltering. And I'm very much in favor of extending the timeline. It would be really important. I know back when all this started, there was comment made that nobody, nobody's going to try this project, and it was because it's onerous. It's hard to do. A lot for the reasons that Kent was talking about in terms of the cost and all of these things. When the pilot limits it to 15 people, that could be cost prohibitive as well. There are lots of different parts of it that we should probably explore, but I think the biggest thing in making this a successful program is that the county actually do what we would do with any other kind of initial program to implement it. You don't have a first-time home buyer program and then just leave it on the shelf. You do a lot of work to get people involved and to work to coordinate and collaborate and make these opportunities possible. Right now, in this community, in Humboldt, we have more people who want to help with these kinds of projects than have ever, we've ever had before. Lots of different groups. Another barrier for these low-barrier projects is the regulations about how they can happen. And one of the things that I want to encourage you to think about is the thing that makes it possible for people who want to move out of a situation of being unhoused into some kind of stable community or experience, is that sense of community. So, you know, the notion of having an institutional arrangement where people can go to and so forth is not the same thing as having community involved in creating these kinds of opportunities. So it's really important that we do this with a lot of groups, a lot of people who are interested, to make it happen everywhere. Yes, Southern Humboldt certainly needs that, but so does Northern Humboldt. Everything in Humboldt County needs this kind of support. And then we can bring... And then we can bring support services to them and do a lot more work. But it really does require that the county do the outreach to bring people to the forum to do this and, and to offer some incentives, whether it's, um, you know, easing some of those regulations. We do have a shelter crisis declaration. We've had that for a long time and we should be able to use some of that still. So, um, I think it's important to do it for 24 months, but just to do 24 more months with no other additional activities and engagement with the community and the groups to make it happen. And not just the, the, the big nonprofits. There are lots of community groups that want to help do this. So thank you. Please extend it and then work with all of us to make it happen.
Hi. This time I have notes. I am an adamant supporter of Measure A and I feel so badly about all of the misinformation that is out there. I have voted since LBJ, that's how old I am. Arcata House, what Arcata House has done brings me to tears. Arcata House saved my adult daughter, who as the whole world knows, has been with me since I found her in the Target parking lot the middle of October. We are doing fine. It's, it's a sandpaper relationship because as y'all know, I can be a cranky old battle axe. But, but we're getting there slowly. We both have tooth stuff holding that's probably going to happen sometime this month. Bureaucratic mess-ups, not, not delaying it. Thank you Darlene. Under Sheriff Bro, his dad, no, his grandpa, was one of the teachers at Eureka High that changed I don't know how many lives. I know that me and every one of my sisters who had him profited tremendously from, "Before you take something into your brain, check out the source." And finally Sheriff Hansel. Words fail me, but not really, I got a little time left. I've been on a couch next to him at the blood bank. I've been in his proximity when he wasn't in uniform, at several basketball tournaments in Crescent City. And one of the Jaegers, the Highway Patrol Jaeger, was there also. These people are the kinds of people that if I, I never had a son, I raised three obstreperous daughters. But by crackey, these, we have a lot of male role models in Humboldt County to be incredibly proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and cannot believe I followed Nezzy.
There you go. All right.
Chair Bone, we do have one caller in Zoom.
Please.
Caller 0151, you've been asked to unmute. You will have three minutes.
Hi, this is Dottie from Southern Humboldt. So I just wanted to, I'm a little bit confused on the item that we're talking about on the consent decree right now. Are we talking about elder abuse? Are we talking about houselessness? It's really, in lots of cases, the same thing. Which, does it matter which one I'm making a comment on?
Yes, we're talking about the, an extension of the safe parking resolution.
Okay, great. So the, the extension of the safe parking resolution absolutely is a must for all of Humboldt County. It's, there's all kinds of people that have been housed. There are all kinds of people that have had other family members housed. My nephew, who died on the street, on the bus stop just some number of months ago this year, wouldn't have died if his car was allowed to be parked someplace. So that's one of the most important things to say, is that there are people that are dying because we're not being responsible enough to let them park a car and be inside. So for the record, this year, I have housed, without any support from the county, over 20 people, on and off, without any help from the county, that have been housed with, without money. And I'm not getting help and instead it's like, "Oh, it's not good enough and it should be better" and all that stuff. There was a family, not very, just a few months ago, that was outside in the rain, in the freezing cold, with a six-year-old child, with two adults that had health issues and the, three generations. And nobody could do anything about it in Southern Humboldt. There was nobody that could do anything, nobody could offer anything. I had a house and I said, "Okay, the house is in construction, but they can be at least inside the fence and have a bathroom to use and a bedroom to use." Nobody wanted to touch it with a 10-foot pole because there was an insurance on it and because the house wasn't like, um, you know, perfect. So what about the people that want something, that need something? These people are willing to help, they're willing to have jobs. They're, I'm, almost every single person of the 20 people that I had was looking for work or had some kind of income coming in, but it wasn't enough to pay for any place to live. I could go on and on and on and I don't know how many minutes or seconds I have left, but...
25.
There's too many. Thank you. There's too many people that need help. There's too many people like myself or the Christian Science Church that's willing to step it up, that's willing to try to do something. But, but it's, nobody cares. Nobody is listening. I went to this strategic planning meeting and said, "I cannot do this anymore."
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you Chair Bone, there are no more callers on Zoom.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Director Ford, coming back to the item of the extension. I'll make the motion so that we could have discussion if someone would want to second that we approve.
Second.
And so having that discussion, then, we can extend it? And does that call, is that have a price tag behind it?
The extension does not. I, I think the thing that we do want to do and absolutely appreciate Nezzy Wade's comments about needing to bring the community together, talk about how to make this happen and how to finance it. Darlene's comments about how much it's cost Arcata House is, is noted and recognize that we need to find funding to make it happen. It's just not going to happen without that.
Okay. Um, thank you. And then I also want to appreciate Sheriff Hansel's comment about not supporting this in the past, but recognizing that this is the way to go in, now in Humboldt County and in the unincorporated areas so that people can have a place to be, so that his deputies can do their jobs. Without that option, which currently in Southern Humboldt, there, there isn't a place for them to be. And it's not for lack of wanting or trying. I really have to recognize that people down there do want this, do recognize the need. And there are lots of groups, including with DHHS, that work towards this. But it is onerous, as someone said, and takes a lot of time and commitment and not, you know, it just can't be throw up a tent and there you go. And so I think that's what we need to recognize as well. But I'm glad the program is going to be available. I, I will make a commitment to my community to get that information out again. But we really need to take, have people take advantage of this to see if it can work.
Supervisor Wilson?
I just want to thank the board members and the staff for indulging the conversation around the example that we have in our community of safe parking with, with Arcata House and the city of Arcata and our support for that. Again, it was just as an example that we do have a program that does exist. It doesn't necessarily mean it's the model for everywhere and all of the things. I just want to say we have something that with people in the field working on it today that we can both use as, to see what the opportunities are and really see what the challenges are too. And, and it was, this would be the time to highlight that because I think that, again, this is the only program currently in Northern California. So I think we should take some pride in that as a community and, but also understand the tenuousness of that, of those programs and, and, and be mindful. Again, thanks the board for, for letting us discuss this today. So with that, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, so with this vote, we're also getting direction. Like I asked, we're going to come back with a little more profound effect rather than just extending this, actually doing something.
We'll take that as part of the board's recommendation or part of the board action to do this, is to bring a report back.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes, and also thanks staff.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Chair Bone?
Yep.
Thank you, motion carries 3-0.
All right. We'll close the public hearing. I take it two items, this is coming to us from the, from Supervisor Wilson and Bushnell and being delivered by the Department of Health and Human Services to address the sale, distribution, abuse of nitrous oxide in Humboldt County.
Chair?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. So I just want to say that Supervisor Wilson and I have been working with Public Health and to really say thank you for all their efforts and around this discussion and that this item is just really to bring recognition to something in our county that we just see a continued growing problem. Also recognizing that there are purpose for, there is purpose for nitrous oxide in, in the restaurant world and to not, to say that we're not going, you know, that, the intent is not to take anything away from people that utilize it the way it should be.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Good morning, Sophia Pereira, Public Health Director for the Department of Health and Human Services. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Just wanted to give a little bit of an overview of the issue and then happy to answer any questions you have. I have a lot of other background data that can kind of help inform any conversation that your board would like to have. So we're here today to talk about nitrous oxide. That's what the resolution is about. For those that don't know, nitrous oxide is also known as laughing gas and this is typically used in medical settings and as well as like Supervisor Bushnell mentioned, in restaurant settings as well as a charging agent for whipped cream canisters. We also are very much aware that there is use of nitrous oxide for recreational drug purposes. And this is linked to serious health problems, which can cause physical and mental illness, injury, and in some cases even death. And nitrous oxide is often sold in canisters that are called Whippets. So people might be more familiar with that terminology in that context. And these can be sold in a lot of different settings, including smoke shops, for example. So just to give a little bit of context of, like, the laws that are already on the books. So in the state of California, it is illegal to sell and possess nitrous oxide products if the intention is to consume for intoxication or an altered state of mind. It is also illegal to sell nitrous oxide products to minors. Those who dispense or distribute nitrous oxide must require the purchaser to sign a document with the laws and dangers of inhaling nitrous oxide products. The purchaser must provide a residential address and prevent, you know, valid government-issued ID. And despite these laws that are in place, we are seeing the pervasiveness of nitrous oxide being available where people are purchasing, especially youth are at risk of purchasing and consuming nitrous oxide recreationally, which can cause physical harm. Inhaling nitrous oxide blocks oxygen to the brain and gives a short-term high. And so it can be a really popular illegal inhalant due to its easy access and easy concealment. High use and long-term use can create a B12 deficiency, weaken the immune system, cause organ failure and lead to severe neurological complications within the peripheral and/or central nervous system. So that's just a little bit of, you know, why, why we're, we're here talking about this. I want to talk also a little bit about public health work that we've been doing alongside Supervisors Bushnell and Wilson. So, you know, we are looking at how we can address this locally. A few months ago, we submitted a legislative proposal to our state Public Health Association that would have banned the sale of nitrous oxide for tobacco retailers. Anecdotally, we have seen nitrous oxide sold at some tobacco retailers locally. We have not had the, the ability to do a full survey of all retailers at this point. But the opportunity arose to submit this legislative proposal and so we, we wanted to be prompted in that. We proposed this solution because there are currently over, as you, you all know, up for the public's benefit, there's over 200 local jurisdictions that have tobacco retailer licensing ordinances. And this would create an enforcement structure because part of what we're seeing is there's laws on the books, but not the enforcement structure in place. So unfortunately, that proposal was not selected to be sponsored legislation by our state association. And so we are still looking at, you know, other, other means to go about this. So we did meet with Senator McGuire and his team and shared that proposal, shared all the data that we could find on this issue. And so I know we're, we're in conversations around that. We also are looking internally about what it would look like to include a nitrous oxide ban in our tobacco retail licensing ordinance. So that's something that currently our staff are looking at. And just want to really recognize our team that is, there's, as you all know, there's no dedicated resources to work on this issue. This has been a topic that our staff have shared, has been discussed across the state among their peers, that this is something that they're seeing, but there's not resources to address it at a policy level. And we also, I'll talk a little bit more about data if you have questions about that. But there's also gaps in data that also makes it harder for us to articulate like the full scale and scope of this issue. But I just really want to recognize our staff because they're grant-funded, they have grant deliverables, they have mandated programs. And in, in the midst of staffing shortages and all the work that they're doing, they've been able to really support moving this work along. So I just want to recognize their efforts as well. So I'll just leave it at that. I have more background information if you'd like it, but I don't want to bombard. So, um, thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, and the only thing I would ask and just is, we just fund or just voted to tax all our tobacco licensees, right? Last year? The new tobacco license?
We, we passed a fee schedule.
Yeah, a fee, fee schedule. So when that person is, I guess that person will go out and inspect those places. Could that be just one more boxy checks to find out if they are selling and everything else without having a whole different?
That's exactly what we're, we're looking at. We're looking, we believe that including a nitrous oxide ban into our existing tobacco retail licensing ordinance that we're currently in the process of implementing would be the most direct way for us to address this issue locally while we perhaps, you know, work to see if there's other solutions. So that is something that we're looking at.
Okay, great. Thank you. Public comment on this item? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the...
I'm sorry Chair.
Is your, is your...
Yeah, hand is raised. Caller 9817, you've been asked to unmute. You'll have three minutes.
This is Stephanie Andrews calling from Shelter Cove. And are, am I, are you hearing me?
Yes, we are, thank you.
This has been an issue that has caused great damage and harm and heartbreak in my family, to many members and to all my, many, many, many of my sons' peers and my sons' and my brother. And what I have found through eight years ago trying to get help with this was that when I went to mental health services and to counseling, drug counseling for our family, they underestimated, you know, they said, "Well, laughing gas is not addictive." At that time, that was the thing. It's emotionally addictive. People that are under great stress, it becomes addictive because instead... People that are under great stress, it becomes addictive because instead of addressing their emotions or being, learning how to be with their emotions, they shut them off. And then over time, it damages their nervous system so they can't, they don't have a way to self-regulate their emotions. And then it causes mental problems and health problems. And what was really eye-opening to me is they believe that now, because back then, you could only buy like a pack if you had a restaurant license, you had to go to cash and carry, you had to have, you know, I had a coffee shop if I wanted to make whipped cream. I would go in and buy six little cartridges with my business license. They weren't in stores, people didn't have this access. And now the most current research, and you know, I have a son in rehab for this, I have a brother that's recovering from nerve damage, you know, I'm living with the effects of this. And what they now said is, they never did a study on this magnitude and the heavy metals that are in the little cartridges. And now that they have these one-gallon tanks, it's, it's an amazing, they just have not, now they are finding how damaging it is. And they're now saying, the newest studies say that it is more addictive than heroin. So to have it available in gas stations and tobacco shops is totally irresponsible. And the other, I mean, I guess that's one major point, is that they weren't doing studies on the magnitude that people have access to and are using at this point. And then the other point I want to make is during COVID and, you know, when I and many other business owners couldn't move into public.
Fifteen seconds.
That tobacco shops could stay open and were selling whipits till 2:00 a.m. and doing home deliveries. They are not using, following any of those laws or?
Thank you. Caller, appreciate it. Okay. Supervisor Wilson?
I just want to, there's a, I appreciate the resolution today. When I was reviewing it and thinking about it a little bit and then talked to a couple of folks, I feel like it's, it's, it's good for a piece of the spectrum of the issue that we're talking about. And it's really the public health part of it. One, you bring up the lack of data and there's a, maybe there's a study here or a disparate study here, but there's just, there hasn't been any aggregation of the information, it feels like. And I wonder, I looked it up and, I mean, I actually got pushed back from a constituent about like, where's the, where are the bodies, as they say, in the data, what you, from what you read? Like, we can hear about it, we talk about it, we've seen, people have seen it, but it's really lacking. Sometimes it takes legislation to actually do the research part as opposed to just, you know, implementing a rule. And so maybe we could, and I know you're doing this, as our staff does this, as something on the side of all the other things that you're doing in terms of your grant-funded work. But oftentimes, we could maybe even start, if we're hitting a wall in relation to actually getting, you know, stuff off the streets directly because we're lacking evidence or we're lacking information, then sometimes we seek to legislation that seeks to find that. And I think maybe that's an opportunity we might, and it's a slower way, it's certainly more frustrating, but it does happen and you see it often and sometimes it's easier to get through just finding the information. So we should maybe think about that a little bit. The other one is the pollution issue of this, which I, you just hear people talk about finding these, and I've seen them, we've all seen the piles of these, of the whipits all over the place and it's just, this is garbage without, without much in the way of, of, you know, any kind of recyclability or return. And so like, maybe we could be, start talking about deposits associated with those and look at it from the solid waste perspective, just aside from the, you know, because we're always trying to regulate all kinds of things, cigarettes and other things. And what we found is when we actually reduce cigarette use, we reduce pollution. And when we actually did deposits for containers, you'll see less of those containers in the environment. I just think there's something about that. I do want to say, I do understand people's want to have this methodology to create whipping cream in restaurants. But I just have to say, if I had to, if I had to choose between the ability to easily more eat, because you can make whipping cream without nitrous oxide, it's possible. If I had to choose if society where we, it was a little harder to make whipping cream, but I had less damage to the youth in my community, I would choose the less damage to the youth in my community. I'm just, I, I don't want to necessarily infringe on people's, what they believe to be a right to do, to have certain products, but at the same time, sometimes we have to, we have to really make some hard decisions about those things and I would just lean in that direction. I will continue to work with your, with our staff and I really appreciate Supervisor Bushnell's leadership on this to look at legislative options. We can't do it by ourselves. And when I saw some folks wanting to make comment to us as it, you know, like, you should pass this, and we're all in, we know that what this problem is in our community and we want to address it. It's our legislators that probably have more power in that and our fellow counties and agencies outside our space that when there's, when we get enough momentum, then you'll see probably what we're asking for. But if it's just Humboldt County alone and just your department writing this up, it's tough to make, it's tough to make the, to get over the hump. But we have to start somewhere and that's what I'm really thankful for. And there have been some other efforts to start to move this ball forward in the past. I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna see more momentum because I think there's more and more awareness and that's what we're having today. So thank you for, for getting it here and thank you for doing that. And I'll do my part, as you know, from the legislative perspective, what I can do. So I am fully in support of this proclamation.
Supervisor, no?
Thank you through the chair. So I thank you to public health and thank you for, I don't, maybe you want to read the proclamation, that'd be okay. And then also just want to, when, when we were having conversation around our county, we looked at other counties and there are some things, a lot of things happening in other counties. So it's just not Humboldt, as Supervisor Wilson said, this, we heard a lot of conversation from, say, when we talked with Senator McGuire around the, you know, the, these items getting into the waterways in LA and his communication with other counties around the disposal of them tossed out on the sides of the roads. I talked to one of the tire companies yesterday that constantly are getting rigs in there with these little cylinders, you know, flat tires. And you see them littered everywhere, so not only the dangers of the drug itself. And I know we only had one public comment today, but I had so much comment for, this is why, you know, wanted to bring this forward, so much comment from people. I know people that have died from it. Where are the bodies? They are there. This is real and people are, it's ruining people's lives. And, you know, I just, I just really appreciate the work and the work with Supervisor Wilson. And we can, we'll continue and hopefully bring recognition to this, to what nitrous oxide can really do and does to people. And, you know, I might challenge people that are selling this. Why? Why are you selling it where it shouldn't be? And, and why, why won't you not? Money is not worth it. And what, what it does to the community, not just children. I know adults that do this and, or, you know, have problems with this. So if maybe you want to read the proclamation and then talk about the other, around the other counties that you looked into.
Well, I apologize, I don't have the proclamation, the resolution in front of me, just because I, I wasn't sure if your board wanted to read it into the record.
Supervisor Wilson, do you have something to say?
I don't want to interrupt this exchange here, but if you wanted to read it, you could do that. Otherwise, I'm, I'm happy with, I've read it. I don't need it in the record.
Yeah, so I would just reference the community then to look it up on our agenda and read that if, and to get that out there and to read what it says because it is really, it's real. And so, thank you, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot, sorry.
No problem. I was like, I thought I was prepared, but there's always a surprise.
Do you have a question?
Do you want me to still speak to what other jurisdictions are doing? Is that, is that helpful at all or?
When doing that, I think, for your research, I think you need to use that. You know, you can talk about it, but you, I'd like to see when you come back with the finish, because this is just advice. The proclamation, just, we're just advising you, we're not even telling you to do it. We're advising you if you would. And I think it's a little stronger than that. So, so I think when you come back, you can say, other counties are doing this, because I know other rural counties are doing this. I think Supervisor Wilson hit the nail on the head by saying, we can do diddly squat as little Humboldt County because, I mean, you can bring in 300 for $108 from Amazon and we're not going to stop that unless we stop the shipping of them into, you know, licensed food agencies, you know, or into, thing is, I think it's a, it's a great connection because I looked, I couldn't find them at Safeway, I couldn't find them at other places that sell cigarettes on the regular basis. It's just the mini-marts and the, and the smoke shops and stuff. So I think that's a, that's a great place to start. And if they get them on the internet, they can, hell, they can get anything on the internet, I guess. So I just think if you could bring back something that, that has some teeth in it that we can follow up on and like, you know, you could talk with RCRC because this has come up before with them. So, anyway, Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, the question I had is you had brought up the option of modifying our tobacco ordinance that basically ties a tobacco license to, if you sell these products, you lose your license. I'm fully in favor of that. If you, if you feel like that's a legal option for us, then be happy to hear that modification, bring it back to the board and, you know, at least it's a step we can do in our local community. So that was, and I don't know if anyone else has done that, it's really with the?
Makes perfectly good sense because I don't know who goes and gets a pack of smokes. I know I got to get a whipit for my pumpkin pie whipped cream. So that probably is a good relationship. You go to a culinary store or a market. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board for, you made the motion, didn't you?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proclamation.
I'll second that, but are you feeling like we're giving you too much to do or I just want to make sure that you're, and do you have any comments? You want to, you want to bring us back to reality on the idea of this stuff? Okay.
No, I, I think we're, we're in alignment about, about next steps. So I appreciate the conversation here. It helps inform the conversations we'll have internally as staff and we definitely plan to bring something back to the board to consider. Hopefully it'll be moving forward with an amendment to our tobacco retail licensing ordinance to include a nitrous oxide ban. But I'll let you know, for some reason, that direction changes, but that, that's the direction we're looking at.
Thank you. County Council?
I need to clarify my motion if I could make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second that. I would ask if, I don't know who can do this because I don't burden anybody, but I would like some sort of reporting back from our environmental health department in relation to the pollution element of this and sort of like a status of that at the state level, if there's any regulation around that and if there's anyone else looking at it because it's a, it's a solid waste issue. I know it's your separate department, but you're under the same roof, so thanks.
Good. Been moved and seconded.
Perfect. We'll go with Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes, and thank you so much to staff for all the work and helping us connect.
Chair Bone?
Yes, and I, I kept saying, I thought we'd done this before, but we did this a few years ago with the butane containers, not the whipits, so.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you.
Normally it comes after, you chair?
We did do it after. We did do it after and then we had discussion. Yeah.
Just a, just a quick.
So I, we had discussion and discussion with public health and then we did public comment and then we came back to the board again.
You were out of the room.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Come on down. This is the Partnership Health Plan of America, of California, excuse me.
Good morning, Chair Bone and Supervisors. I'm Michelle Stevens, Assistant Director for Health and Human Services. Nancy Stark here, our Legislative and Policy Manager, is going to be presenting this item to you all.
Boy, I haven't seen you for a while.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Bone, members of the board. Nancy Stark, Legislative and Policy Manager for the Department of Health and Human Services. This item requests that you ratify action taken by the Partnership Health Plan Board of Commissioners by introducing an ordinance, amending sections of the county code dealing with representation on the health plan's governing board. As you know, about 44% of Humboldt County residents are enrolled in Medi-Cal. Partnership Health Plan manages those healthcare services for those patients and pays our local clinics, hospitals, and specialists for the healthcare services they provide. Partnership is a nonprofit county-organized health system model of Medi-Cal managed care. As such, each county's Board of Supervisors in the health plan service area appoints members to the Partnership Board of Commissioners. Representation is proportional by the number of, number of Medi-Cal patients in each county. Humboldt has held three seats on the commission since 2013. Prior to January 1, there were 14 counties served by Partnership. Partnership expanded to 10 additional counties on January 1 of this year. They are now the Medi-Cal Managed Care Plan for Medi-Cal beneficiaries in the 24 northernmost counties in the state. In preparation for that expansion, the Partnership Board of Commissioners adopted changes to the commission's bylaws. Those changes modify the commission representation formula for how many seats each county has on the partnership board, allow for any seats that are lost due to the updated formula to be depleted through attrition, add language stating the provider types that Partnership encourages representation from to align with the Department of Healthcare Services 2024 contract, and add language stating special efforts will be made to select candidates who reflect the diversity of the communities that Partnership serves. The item before your board requests you to introduce an ordinance to amend sections of the Humboldt County Code to reflect these actions. Each of the 14 legacy Partnership counties are asked to modify their county codes to reflect these changes. It's important to note that this change is likely to reduce the number of commissioners allocated to Humboldt County from three to two in the future. Nine of Partnership's legacy 14 counties will likely see a similar reduction in the number of seats allocated to them. This will accommodate representation from Partnership's 10 new counties while maintaining a functional-sized governing commission. That, I'm happy to answer. Any questions you might have?
Wow, you nailed it. So our two members now are Alicia and, our CIO, excuse me.
Your, your current representation is the Director of the Department of Health and Human Services or designee. Your director has designated me as your representative on that partnership board for the last 10 years. You've also appointed Liz Laura O'Rourke, who is the CEO of United Indian House Services, and Commissioner Tori Starr, who is the CEO of Open Door Community House Services.
Not Alicia, Alicia's on CMSB, I'm sorry. Well, with that, I'll ask for any public comment on this item?
Ken Swawski, I always support these kind of efforts, but my question is, if I understood you, you said you were downsizing from three to two voting members. So I was just curious which one of those are going to be edged out. It's always a shame to have our positions diluted as far as things. It's nice to include other people, but I'm just curious because it was a very nice representation you had, having Open Door and the tribe in there. So don't know if you're stepping aside or who is. Maybe the, maybe the Partnership Health Plan of California, go ahead and partner up with us to get rid of those whipits too, get that on their agenda. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. speak.
There's, there are no callers.
Seeing no other public comment?
I'll make a motion that we approve public, I mean, excuse me, staff recommendation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded?
Chair Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries 3-0.
Seeing nothing else, I do want to remind everybody on the 21st, since we do not have a meeting next week, on the 21st at the Eureka Women's Club, the Eureka Women's Club are having their annual waffle breakfast, eggs, sausage, they're bringing it back, Eureka Women's Club. It's their annual waffle breakfast, starts at 8:00 a.m. It's their big fundraiser of the year. They also have a raffle and a silent auction. So Claudia Cranford usually comes and speaks about it, but she wasn't here today, but she did email me. So again, the 21st, great waffles. They got all these little waffle makers, it's kind of fun. Anyway, with that, seeing a, nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you. J Street, Women's Club.